When you say dropped, do you mean a part of the drop program?
Correct.
Or have left the department through retirement or other attrition?
Exactly.
I have that answer.
Okay.
Thirty-four this year, or fourteen, fifteen, or thirteen, fourteen, fifty-nine, and twenty-fifteen.
So Mike?
So a total of ninety-three.
Ninety-three. So if we have ninety-three officers that have retired, or dropped, or are no longer with us, how are we going to replace those ninety-three officers? I know that we're talking about fifteen, but we're already over five hundred officers in the hole, and it just continues to grow. So by next year, we'll probably be six hundred short. So I want to figure out a plan. If there's somehow, some way, if it's through those examples of a sin tax, or whatever tax we want to do, or whatever other means of saving funds that we look at, something geared towards public safety.
All right, so I wanted the city manager to have an opportunity to answer at least a couple of those questions. First was, how are you going to be presenting revenue estimate information, in particular, differently than was done with mayor and council in the past? I think we received the information on a monthly basis through various dissemination practices by the previous city manager. Vice Mayor Gates and I asked you to do it differently. How are you going to do it differently with regard to moving forward?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Noakowski, yes. As the mayor mentioned, we do have a practice now of distributing revenue collection information on a monthly basis. We don't distribute expense information on a monthly basis, but that's part of the charge for Mr. DeHoney is to develop some better reporting mechanisms for the mayor and council on those things. I think as we've discussed, in terms of bigger reporting issues, we want to make sure that September becomes a point where we have a report to the mayor and council that gives a wrap-up of the previous year. So everything we're doing now until September are estimates of this current year, but in September, we have actual numbers for how, in this case, twenty thirteen, fourteen ended up. And so we would plan to have a significant report to the mayor and the council in September to evaluate how we did revenue and expenditures, actuals, in the prior year, and then also we would have a look ahead at that early point for the year coming ahead.
Would it be possible, seeing that I'm the chair of the Public Safety Subcommittee,
can we actually do it on a monthly basis and actually come up with some of the major items? And we can compare it from actuals to what's budgeted and look at the variances to make sure that if there is overexceeding their budget, that we can actually try to figure it out prior to the trial budget?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, yes, again, that is part of what Mr. DeHoney's going to work on, is a better way to report. I would just say that we currently, as staff, have several checkpoints. One is called the three-plus-nine period, and that happens in October, when we've had three months of experience with the year's budget, July, August, and September. Once that information is in, then the Budget and Research Department starts going department by department to do just that. So we can do a better job of communicating that information. Until you have about three months in, it doesn't make a lot of sense on a monthly basis, but after we get three months of actuals, then there's information that's valuable, I think, to decision-makers, and we want to find a way to present that to you in a way that's understandable.
I think what the council is asking, though, is that to the extent possible, once the assistant city manager gets done with his good work, that there be more regular reporting, particularly the Public Safety Subcommittee, on budget-related matters in those departments. I think, I don't want to speak for the council, but I think it's what he's asking for.
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, yes, we will do that.
Thank you.
Okay, other councilman, Gates, and then we'll go down, and then we'll head this way. Councilman Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say to Ed, you obviously came into this process halfway through. This was not your budget from the beginning. This is a tough situation for you personally, and I tip my cap to you for all that you've done through this process. And actually, I thought this presentation today was excellent. Kudos to the whole team. Great use of PowerPoint. Wasn't as good as that bird we had fly over in the water presentation, but this was good. And, you know, this is tough stuff. It's complicated, and I thought that you guys put this in a way where we can disagree over where to go from here, but I thought you did a really nice job of putting that all together. To me, really, what today is about, today is the beginning of the 2015-2016 budget. That's really where we have got to hear the wake-up call. We can't wait till the last second, and I'm very encouraged by what's in this presentation, Ed, about the things that you're going to start doing now, working with Mr. DeHoney, working with the whole team to start to address these things. I'm pleased by the six-and-a-half million inefficiencies that are built in to this budget, but I believe we have to redouble those efforts. I'm committed to that as the chair of the Efficiency Subcommittee. And again, so one of the, a lot of comments have been made through this process, and one of the comments that sticks out in my mind, and I intend to follow up on it, and I know others do, was that there are people in the city that feel, you know, they have ideas for efficiencies, and for whatever reason, they're being ignored. We can't do that. One of the main reasons that we've achieved the efficiencies the city has is because of great ideas from employees, so we need to foster that environment where the employees know that they can come to us, they can come to their supervisors, they can come to you, Ed, and those good ideas can filter up through the process. Strategic plan, also extremely important, and, you know, the county, just yesterday, they passed their budget unanimously, and that budget was based upon the strategic plan that they had just approved. That's a great model for us, but for us to know, really, what we ought to be spending money on is we need to find out what things we ought to be doing and what's most important, and so I'm committed to that, and I'm happy to hear that you're committed to that as well. The other thing, and, you know, people don't want to hear that employee costs are going up, pension costs, workers' comp, health care costs, but they are. They are going up, and they need to be addressed, and we can't just ignore it and say it doesn't matter. And so I'm very happy to see your commitment to that, and I think everything has to be on the table. We need to look at that. And I'm not saying that, you know, the city hasn't started down the road towards addressing pension, but frankly, a lot of those savings are down the road. I'm talking about things that can be done in the short term to address these things, such as workers' comp costs. They were, I mean, there was a seven-million-dollar increase. That's a lot of city services. Those could have been raises for folks, so we need to address that and look forward to doing that. I'm pleased about the core approach that Mr. DeHoney is going to be working on. I would politely suggest, and I would be supportive, I don't know where anyone else would be, but I would be supportive of bringing in a consultant alongside of Mr. DeHoney, who's an expert in Six Sigma and lean, and I think we ought to try and apply those principles that have been so successful in the private sector to the city of Phoenix, and I think that it can be very successful, so I would be supportive of that as well. Just one question, getting into some of the specifics on the revenue increases, what's the amount that you anticipate will be, would be generated by the excise tax on the water bills?
Mayor, Councilman Gates, the amount in 2014-15 generated by that tax would be nine-point-five million dollars.
Well, that's the lion's share of the eleven million is off of that.
That's correct.
Okay. Getting back to this particular budget that we're talking about today, I believe that we're not in a, I mean, basically, this budget is predicated upon revenue increases that this council hasn't voted on yet. So there are assumptions that are being made into the future. We don't know what's going to happen. At this point, we don't have that money. I understand why you've done it, but that's what those assumptions are based upon. We don't know where the council's going to end up. So my position is that we ought to be looking at money that is non-tax, non-tax increase, and it's money that we can quantify. And so for me, I've been talking about in the last meetings, going through the attachments B and C, I've identified upwards of four-to-five million in cuts that I would support, that I do not believe, not saying they're not painful for us here at City Hall, they would be painful, but they do not take away vital city services. So there's four-to-five million right there. There's about seven million in vacant positions. I think if we took a small percentage of that, say, two million of those that would be removed, that gets you up to about six or seven million. And then additional land sales. I thank staff for their efforts on land sales up to this point, but we can do a lot more, and I appreciate the efforts that are being made, but we need to redouble those efforts. And by getting to three-to-four million in additional land sales, that gets us to the eleven million dollars without having to do these painful revenue increases. So I believe that can be done. Again, it's something that hasn't even happened yet on these revenue increases. That vote hasn't even taken place at this point. So I would move in that direction. That's where I think we ought to go with this. That alone, without getting into a lot of other painful cuts. I appreciate the fact that we do not have, we no longer have cuts to the senior centers and the community centers in here, but I think that we could have gotten, we could have covered that hole any different way, and I'm disappointed that we're not doing it that way with this budget that's being presented to us. And so because of that, I will be voting against the budget today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Gates. The bird you referenced from the Water Department report was a fact, a black swan. Yeah. Other members of the council who have comments? Councilman Gago?
Thank you very much. I just want to say that it's my intent that any savings or resources identified in the core review, and thank you for undertaking that, should be prioritized first towards adding new officers on the public safety side. So I am optimistic that we will find some good suggestions. I think we should start with the many good suggestions our employees and citizens have provided in this process, which have ranged from underutilized capital equipment, vehicles, cranes, to looking at the terms of contracts we sign with our vendors and seeing if we give our vendors more certainty in the length of the contract timing. Will they give us some discounts and pass on those savings, which we can then pass on to the citizens? And it would certainly make all of our lives easier if we could have more predictability and some of our health care costs on the side. So I appreciate the people who put those suggestions forward and know that we are listening, and we'll take those into account. I also hope the core review will really speak with our employees further and make sure that they create, you create an environment where they feel comfortable putting forward their ideas, because we got some of them here, but there were many employee groups, including many people in management, who didn't have that opportunity as part of this process, and I'm optimistic that there are many more improvements in that area as well. I also hope that as we look for those areas and look at different options on the revenue side, that we will continue to prioritize revenue sources that also move us forward on other city goals. And so I have the pleasure of chairing the Housing Neighborhoods and Development Committee, and will be looking at some of the issues around blight, and whether we can make changes in our process on liens or in other areas where maybe we can get some revenue, but also we can address some of the blight in our community, which leaves people feeling less safe and is not helpful to economic development. We want people who are coming into our community to see how beautiful and safe we are, and sometimes blighted properties don't send the message that you should invest here. And we need to send a strong message for economic development. Everyone up here agrees that if we, the more we can grow our way out of budget problems, the better. The more we can attract new high-paying jobs in areas like bioscience and diversify our economy, the better we will be off. So economic development needs to be a priority, and I'm very glad that this budget does not cut economic development. That is an important priority and something that we should all be proud of here today. I also think on the economic development front, one of the most important things we've been talking about this year is aligning our infrastructure and economic development priorities, and really planning ahead to support that growth, and that needs to be, to me, a top priority as we go forward. I agree with Councilman Gates that this is the beginning of the next-year budget process, and so we need to be thinking about all of these issues. I also wanted to, the city manager and I had a good conversation about some of the issues around parking, and as one of the two downtown council members, I feel we haven't had enough of a conversation about exactly where that revenue will come from, and appreciate the city manager's assurance that there will be more dialogue, and we will be working with our downtown stakeholders to make sure that we have a policy that helps support the continued growth of downtown. We've had great progress in creating a more vibrant downtown, and we want people to be coming in and cycling in and out, and more people moving here, more people shopping in downtown, so we need to make sure that parking process and parking fees support our goals, and we need continued dialogue in that area. So thank you for making sure that we will make a parking policy that works for everyone. Also want to echo some of Councilman Gates' comments on vacant lots. That needs to be a priority in selling city property, but we also need to make sure we're not looking at just the large parcels. One of my surprises in coming into office was trying to get parcels in my district that the city owned and getting assessor numbers as opposed to a map, and there was a very large amount of small parcels, but those can be valuable. We had Google coming in here a few meetings ago for creating a process for Google Huts, and those don't need a large amount of land, so that's the extent we can make those assets economically valuable, that's very helpful. This morning, at the Housing and Neighborhood Subcommittee, we talked about parklets, so something as small as a parking space, and stakeholders saying, "We want that investment." And just because it's small doesn't mean it doesn't create economic value for us. So it's great that we're thinking big, but we also need to really get into the details, because we have a lot of great assets in our city, and we need to tell our citizens that we absolutely are going to look high and look low for savings and to create a better budget process with less sacrifice, although I do appreciate that everyone across our city is sacrificing in this process, and want to reiterate that my colleagues and I are all going to be taking the cuts that we are asking our employees to take, and thank you to our city manager for agreeing to take the same cuts. It is shared sacrifice that will get us through this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. To the point of shared sacrifice, so I'm sort of a pack rat, so I actually kept in my office the budget from this fiscal year. So we talked a lot, I guess, about the PIO budget, for example. It was two-point-six-six million last year. You know what it is, based on your presentation just now? Three-point-two million dollars. We're actually increasing it six-hundred thousand. Now, the only reason it was two-point-six last year is because I made a stink about it, and the previous city manager cut it by three-hundred thousand dollars. But I guess we're giving that three-hundred thousand dollars back this year, at the same time the rest of the council, or at least some of the rest of the council, voted to cut police officer pay and so forth. If you're looking for the page numbers, fellas, it's page seventeen. Lobbying, lobbying went up a hundred thousand dollars from last year, almost a hundred, ninety-seven thousand dollars. We've got, last year it was one million, three-hundred and four thousand and change. This year, it's one million, four-hundred and one thousand. They didn't tell you that in the brochures that they just presented up there. So I would disagree with my colleague, who I usually agree with, Councilman Gates. It wasn't the best presentation, because it didn't give us any standard of comparison. So at the same time, we're cutting police officers and firefighters and the rest. We're increasing public affairs six-hundred thousand, not shared sacrifice as far as I'm concerned, and we're increasing lobbying. I'm confused about the memberships, because we talked about five-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars in memberships, but I have a memo, because I've asked about this before, request on memberships dated November fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. Per your request, attached from Budget and Research is a list of organizations to which the city is a member. These are payments that you have seen or will see on payment ordinances throughout the year. If you have any questions, please let me know. I now have a question. The total was one-point-eight, one million, eight-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand, nine-hundred-and-four dollars, but in the packet that was distributed today, which I think we got right before this, was five-hundred-and-forty-two thousand. Now, I have referenced this one-point-eight-million-dollar figure several times, and I don't like to be made to look stupid, so is it five-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, or is it one-point-eight? The signer on this was Ed Zirker, some guy who was assistant city manager back in the day. So I think Councilman Noakowski, I think Councilman DiCiccio for sure have questioned some of our numbers. I certainly questioned our point of reference last year, when we had a seven-and-a-half percent increase that we were budgeting for in terms of growth, but I got to be able to have confidence in these numbers, and this doesn't breed confidence at all. And in the future, when we do a presentation like this, I like this book, because this book compares this year, last year, and the year before. You know, we're increasing stuff where I think the implication was this isn't that big of a deal, it's only, I think the total, if you throw in travel and everything, was five-point-four-four million dollars roughly. You know, as far as the travel goes, the presentation showed that ten years ago, roughly, it was nine-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand today, or something. Today, it's two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand. That's good. That's a good start. But of course, if we would have had the same conversation ten years ago, everybody would have screamed that the nine-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, or whatever it is, was a sacrosanct figure, couldn't be cut, or the city would end, and so forth. We're not in the amenity business, we're in the public safety business, so we are actually cutting our officers and everything, at the same time, we're raising some of this stuff. So I just want to make that point. The pension costs, that's been referenced as something that's been going up. Of course, it's been going up, we haven't taken the measures to address it, and now it's going to be on the November ballot, and for better or worse, we're going to see how that plays out, but it's now, I think, effectively out of our hands. Could have taken steps to change that dynamic and change the increase in pension costs every year, haven't done it year after year after year, and now, like I said, I think change is going to be imposed. So we'll see what happens there. Let's talk about golf courses for a second, one of my favorite topics. So we have a, we hired consultants, we spent a lot of money, I didn't vote for it, but we spent a lot of money on consultants to talk about the golf courses. They came back with a recommendation that one of the courses, and they're in the golf business, is unsustainable. It just doesn't work as a golf course. It may have at one time, I'm sure it's a great place, but my dad's played it, I mean, he says it's nice, but it's not sustainable according to people who run golf courses. It's a drag on the ticket, to use a political term. Are we doing anything to sell this course? Are we? No. What we did, again, honestly, something I was in favor of, but what we did is said, "No, we're definitely going to keep that course open." That doesn't make any sense. You know, with land prices going up and so forth, that could be millions of dollars. To Councilman Gates' point, we could be selling properties and go back and maybe take a more serious look at the tax structure we've got here, and also these increases that are so short-term, we haven't even gotten out of the sixty-day window yet. That's how willy-nilly they came. Somebody decided there was a crisis, and almost immediately, these ideas popped up, I'm not sure out of where, I think a couple were council-generated, I think the rest came from staff. And so we're voting on a budget, as Councilman Gates suggested, without even knowing, really, how much we're actually going to raise from this, with no experience in this, and really not a long time to study it. It's only been a few weeks. I think the sixty-day window doesn't end until, like, July, or June seventeenth, and we're voting on this June eighteenth, so this is a budget built on spec. I would like an answer about the one-point-eight million, because I don't, I mean, me quoting it, I got to feel like I'm confident when I'm quoting these numbers. So that was kind of a red flag, because I knew that wasn't the same as I'd been told when I saw this presentation today. Like I said, you know, I think the facts speak for themselves, I don't think it's disputable. I got the budget book right here, so unless there's something wrong with the budget book, PIOs and lobbying are going up about seven-hundred grand. We could do a lot with seven-hundred grand. Newspaper asked us today, or yesterday, "What would you do if you had five-hundred thousand?" I said, "Hire more police officers." We could hire some more police officers for that. We could certainly hire it for another seven-hundred grand, but we are putting the focus on this other stuff. And so it's not entirely shared sacrifice if other stuff isn't getting cut. Yeah, we're all taking a cut, and that's great, but apparently, this stuff isn't. So, you know, I have to give some big, unless there's something factually I said that was wrong, I'm good with where we're at. I'm going to vote no, and confident in that vote, but I would like an answer on the membership thing.
Thank you very much, and to the vice mayor's credit, he has been consistent in his desire to sell the golf courses for the highest and best use, and use the money for other priorities. I appreciate, I respect his opinion. I happen to disagree with that we should be selling off our golf courses for the highest and best use, but I respect that he's consistency in that position. On the issue of memberships, I think that does deserve a response in light of the information the vice mayor provided. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll address two things. So first, the memberships. What we focused on there was the general fund cost of memberships. I believe the memo that you're referring to is all-city memberships, so that one-point-eight million would, yeah. Yeah, and, right, I apologize for the confusion. When that list was put together, it was all-city-wide memberships, and so that would include the Aviation Department and Water Department, Public Works Department, Transit Department, Housing Department, where they have memberships that are coming from non-
But you understand why I'd be confused. I'm asked about membership, and this is what I got with no differentiation. I mean, so I'm surprised to see the other members.
I apologize for that confusion. So the comparison was, comparison isn't exact there, because that was for all, and this was about just the general fund cost.
But it is, I mean, I was out there quoting this number, so I just assumed.
The second thing is the Public Information Office. So I think the number you're referring to in the budget, if I've got it here correctly, is a number that would compare to that top number, Central Public Information Office, including Phoenix Eleven at two-million, seventy-two thousand, and the budget number you're looking at, it's two-point-six, but the general fund portion of it is two-point-three million. That would be the comparative. The three-point-two million includes the PIOs that are housed in, say, streets and fire and police and other general fund departments. So that's also why that, there's a difference there.
And this is why people get frustrated. So I'm sorry, I'm comparing two-point-three million to two-
Two-point-oh-seven-two.
All right, but we're actually hiring three-point-two million, because we're still paying crack, the police, fire, streets, and others. It just seems like if you're spending two-million dollars on public information officers, and we had, and this number's in here, we had full-time positions, so last year it was nineteen-point-six, because it looks like a couple of them are part-time that I assume come in, so two-point-six of them are part-time. It went down a little bit, it was twenty-two-point-eight. But so you're saying we actually have more than that, because we're not counting the people who are embedded in police, fire, streets, and other general fund departments?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, correct. So in this budget-
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So we have nineteen-point-six million people who represent something other than that. I mean, police, fire, streets, and other general fund departments is like our entire budget. So why would we need other people? It's way too much money for, I mean, it just is. That's just, to say that, well, it's broken up differently, I don't-
So the central staff-
Why don't you give the city manager a chance to appropriately respond? Mr. City Manager, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, so the central staff in PIO includes Phoenix Eleven, so that station that's broadcasting us right now, as well as people who are serving, we have departments that aren't big enough to warrant their own PIO, and so they split pieces of PIOs. They're also doing the revenue generating idea that I talked about, the half-million dollars, and they're maintaining the city's website. So that's what's contained in central PIO. There are departments that are big enough that they warrant their own full-time PIO, or PIOs in the case of police and fire, and so those are housed within the budget of those departments. So that's the distinction here. What we're trying to show is, the request was, "What are we spending on public information in the general fund?", and that shows the full number, part in centralized, part in decentralized.
So, but it's all general fund money?
That represents all general fund money.
Three-point-two million dollars.
Yes.
Then I guess, again, back to the problem that others on the council have highlighted about the numbers, but I'm looking at our department summary, Public Information Office. It says two-point-six-six million dollars. So I would have to go to find the PIO for police, I'd have to go to the police department and find it. That is not a great way to run a railroad. They're either public information officers, or they're actual officers out in the street, one of those two. You know, again, we're not comparing apples to apples, I guess, but I'm not sure that's any fault of mine. I flipped to the budget book, looked at the public information page, it says very clearly two-point-six million, which still seems way high to me, particularly to do what you're describing, since they're not working for this other stuff, which is the bulk of what we do. I don't dispute that the police needs one, I don't dispute that the fire department needs one, but when we're talking about dollars like this, so is there somebody who can pull together to see if the three-point-two is more than we spent last year?
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
I have a question regarding the PIO.
Please, go ahead, Councilwoman.
So how I understand it is that one-point-thirteen is coming from the general fund.
So just to orient you on this slide, two-million dollars, two-point-one million dollars is the Central Public Information, it's like a department, and Ms. Macarone runs that department with almost twenty employees. Then we have public information officers who are stationed in other general fund departments paid for by the general fund. That's represented by the one-million, one-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand.
Okay, but I want to get clear on this. The Central Public Information Office is cable, is coming from the licensing and the cable. Am I correct, Mario?
Yes, cable, Mayor, Councilwoman Postor, cable licensing fees are actually part of the general fund. A portion of those fees are allocated to cover the cost of the Central Public Information Office.
And then the citywide public information staff comes from the other-
Yeah, the other, comes from, this is the general fund, citywide public information staff, and those are in the other departments that are funded by other general fund resources.
And then there's another fund of PIOs that comes from enterprise. Doesn't come from the general fund, it comes from the enterprise, and there's a whole other layer. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I ask another question about this? Just for clarity-
Mr. Vice Mayor, you may.
The 3.2 million comes out of the general fund. It is part of the expenses, the 1.175.2 billion dollars in expenses.
Correct.
Period.
Yes.
So I just, that I thought was needlessly confused. I think this was needlessly confusing, period, but it's 3.2 million dollars out of 1.175 billion that we're spending on the public information department and the guys who work in the, whatever, the staffers who work in these other departments.
It's actually 1.148 billion with this budget, but yes, correct.
Right, I'm just looking at your number you've got here. Okay, so I just want to make sure it's clear that that's a lot of money that could have been off, you know, we're now raising taxes to pay for it, or I'm not, but that's what's going to be the end result. So it seems like a lot to me. We could cut that in half, I think, and save a million and a half dollars, and then you wouldn't have to do, at the very least, you wouldn't have to do the other items, and I'm not advocating for this, but the other items besides the water bill increase. Because that's about one and a half, two million. I mean, you could do that. You could forego the increase. I guess we didn't get into the lobbying. It looked like that went up 100,000. I assume that just went up 100,000. Is there any reason that number isn't accurate?
No, I, without seeing the page, I don't know.
Okay.
But there's no reason to assume it's not.
Okay, I mean, again, I'm basing it on our budget book that is given to us and seems pretty detailed, so there should be no confusion. Again, I'm just trying to highlight that we're not cutting everything. We're increasing some things, and those things are not a core city function. We are in the public safety business, to my mind, and, you know, we're in streets, frankly. That's how the city, I think, started. And now we're in the business of golf courses and PIOs and doing other stuff. It's nothing against them or people golf or anything else, but I just think if you polled the average citizen, and I think I've done it by actually running for office myself, you know, I think the priorities are elsewhere, and that's why I'm voting against this. I think it's a mistake.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Gago. He had a follow-up.
I think the 100,000 increase in the public affairs side is, MAG is increasing its dues, and I, we've talked about this at past council meetings, but, and I said earlier, investment in infrastructure is so key to our growth, and it is, MAG is involved with really top priority projects, I think, for the city, but certainly for our district in terms of freeway access, light rail access. So for me, that is a real investment in growing the city and a wise expenditure.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Williams, keep going, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. First, I want to thank Mario, Ed, and everyone who has worked so hard. This has probably been the most painful exercise I've seen in 25 years. It has not only been painful for the employees, for the residents, and the council, anyone involved, even on the fringes, have made comment on how the city of Phoenix has progressed all spring. I hope this is the last time we have to go through any type of exercise like this. I believe what you have proposed is reasonable. I am very excited about looking into the core. I think that is the key to our future. We have to look for a different way to provide better services. We cannot continue to take it from the employees, nor can we cut services. We either find new revenue, or we become much more efficient and better at what we do. I disagree, with all due respect, with the Vice Mayor. I think one of the things that we-
My wife does too sometimes.
Does she? Okay. Just think of me as that nagging wife. Okay. That, you know, transparency, transparency, transparency. And if we want the city to be transparent, then I think those PIOs are necessary. They each serve a different function, whether it's Channel 11 broadcasting this show that people I know are watching at home, because I get comments regularly on what we've done, what we've worn, I mean, the smallest details, so I know they're really paying attention, right up to the safety aspect. We warn a lot of people. We tell them traffic problems. We tell them about police action, where not to go, what to be aware of. I think the public service announcements that fire and police and the other departments that we provide to prevent drownings, I think that they serve a real purpose in this community, and that would not happen if we didn't have the PIOs throughout the different departments. It took me a long time to figure that out, but I'm very supportive now because I now see all the function. I am delighted to see that you are going to be hiring new officers. The sooner the better. Hopefully you will come up with some great ideas by fall, and maybe we can start the process of hiring, doing the interviews or whatever, earlier than you have said in your budget. I think one of the problems that we suffered through is the budget is laid out. We talk about the general fund, and even when the public is speaking to us and the employees, there is not a general knowledge of the different funding sources that we have. And I would suggest that when you prepare future budgets or financial statements, whatever, that you list in there the categories, whether it's an enterprise fund, which enterprise fund, if it's coming from general fund. I mean, tell us where the money's coming from, and if that's where we budgeted from, I think that would help people understand that there's different pots of money, and many of those pots are restricted to certain projects or programs, and we can't tap into those. So I think it's very important that we begin to educate our staff, our employees, as well as the public, on some of those items. Also, I want to make a statement to Mr. Schmidt. I think everybody on this council has been very careful about their budgets. My budget may seem high, but I will tell you, I have returned money. I have not spent most of it every single year. Although it's budgeted for this amount, I have given back anywhere from 30,000, 40,000 dollars a year that I don't spend. I happen to have probably the, a staff, at least one staff person, that has been with me since I was elected. Her salary is probably higher than some of yours, just because she's been here seven and a half years. I know that that causes a problem, but I want him to be assured that we are each giving up a share, not only of our budget, but of our personal income. So I think it's very important that that gets out to the public. And I think, once they, if you come up with some great things, or if the economy would really turn, we can always do a budget adjustment later this year. Is that not correct?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, yes, that is correct.
So even though it is in this budget, if it would benefit us in a way, we can make that adjustment. We could hire sooner, or we could do whatever it takes. Because I'm feeling very positive. I think the city is blossoming. I have people that are telling me they're, they have built out all their existing zoning they've had in the past, and they're actually buying raw land to begin new commercial projects. So I see this as really turning around in this community, and I hope we are very prudent on how we proceed, but understand, I think, Phoenix has always been a great city. It will continue to be a great city. We've put a team together. It's been a stormy process, I will admit, but I see us making very positive steps in the future. And I think as we go through next year's budget, and we began much earlier, because if anything, we learned you don't wait until after the first of the year to begin this process. I think Councilwoman Nowakowski's idea of presenting us with a monthly synopsis on what's going on, a statement or comparative or something, so that we could address if a problem comes up, good or bad, that we have that opportunity and not wait until we get to the 11th hour and drop a bomb on the public, the employees, and the council. I just think we are going to be paying greater attention, probably than we ever have in the past, and I think more emphasis is going to be put on a real zero-based budget, and I think that's extremely important. And I also think that we do need to look at the sale of some of the properties. I don't think all property needs to be sold. We have plans for future. I am very supportive of, there are some sites that I think we could be taking advantage of, that has a good market value, that really doesn't serve us well, but could serve another business or give someone a better opportunity. There are some near and dear to downtown, and I think we should be looking at those because I think they have a good value. As for the Parks Department, that is a high priority in my district. People live in the suburbs because they want the space, they want the trails, they want the parks. And I know we've had many conversations with many of the people, and they're very supportive. They understand that they have had a bargain for a very long time. They are definitely supporting the increase in fees, and they see that as very positive and still a very good buy for the family and for the seniors. I don't think I've had a single one come up and tell me, don't do that. They said, yes, we understand. Yes, we've been getting a buy at very low cost, and we should be paying our fair share. So I am very supportive of the budget you've proposed, and I look forward to seeing where this goes by fall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Pastore, did you have anything?
Well, Councilman Gates, just want to tell you, say a story first. You'd be proud to know that I have been certified in lean, Six Sigma. I am in the process of getting a white belt. Ed and I have discussed this, and so we, that's where we went and discussed the core. So I'm glad we're moving that way. Strategic plan, I'm right there with you. We need a strategic plan, and we need to move forward and know how we're moving forward. Secondly is increased transparency. As I sit, as I'm the chair of the Transparency Committee, I am really going to push this summer and get things ready and designed, and clarity on council agendas and when we receive our council agendas, and having the ability to vet everything through and be able to have enough time to ask some very hard questions other than sitting up here to get some of the answers or further questions. I'm a strong believer in all of us sitting together and implementing study sessions and wanting to see study sessions so that all of us can discuss. We have great ideas. We have innovative ways of solving things, but we, the when we come together is really sitting up here, and I would really like to see some study sessions. And of course, reform of the budget and negotiation process, in particular, the budget. I have, I sit in two different, three different systems now, and we start our budget process starting in October. And we have pretty much a forecast then saying, we're not generating what we think we're just supposed to be generating. You need to start cutting back. You need to start looking for the future. Do you have positions that you're going to give up? You need to cut this much amount from our, from your budget now. And so this process, for me, has been very frustrating and does need some improvement. One of the things that I struggle with is in receiving these items and not having a really clear understanding of what it means. And when I start to tear it apart, it's not very clear. So I strongly support my Councilwoman Williams in the fact of the budget and making sure we know where the money, if it's coming from enterprise, if it's coming from licensing cable, if it's coming from just the general fund, that would be perfect for me to clear an understanding, and I think in general, for our taxpayers, to be able to be able to read this and understand it clearly. Vacancies, I have heard, and I have sat here and I've heard, it's 117 vacancies that we need to protect. And then it became 104 vacancies we need to protect. And currently, now I'm told, it's 92 vacancies that we have to protect. I know we have to protect all vacancies, but these are the 100 that we are critical to us and our services. However, when I look at the vacant civilian positions, there are positions here that have been sitting here over a year, and if they're critical and we're protecting them, then I'm at the point of, why are we not hiring them if they're that critical? And then I see on the list, and it looks like it's a revolving list, it's not, these are the vacancies that we're protecting. It's a revolving list because then I see a new one on here that has been here for one day. So I think we need to get some clarity on this, and we can discuss it later, but these are kind of the struggles that I have because I'm making assumptions, and when making assumptions, I'm thinking one thing, and then what reality is, is another. So I think that's just one of the transparent items. So I commend you for going through this process. It has been a difficult process for all of us and even those in the audience, and it has been challenging, but we're getting there. What the one area is, for me, is 15, 16, and generating revenue and really developing an economic development plan, a strong economic development plan that we can shoot out and start moving. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, appear that the vacant positions that have been open the longest have to do with an RMS system from police. Could you explain what that is? Because it seems like there's four, five, or six positions that have been held open longer than a year that relate to the police department and RMS system.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilwoman Pastore. Yes, so the RMS project is the Record Management System, which we are replacing in the police department. There's a set of positions, or I think it's called PACE Secretary, that is, were positions that were needed for the old system. As those became vacant, we held them because in converting to the new system, there will be a new set of work that we'll need civilian support for. So it didn't make sense to continue filling those while we were ramping down the old system, and we will need those to do new work when the new system comes online this summer. So that would explain where they've been vacant for a while, but we need them for the new system.
All right, thank you very much. What does the Record Management System provide to police, law enforcement, the council, and the public?
Thank you, Mayor. What that does is, when you see a police officer in their patrol car and they're on a mobile data terminal or a computer, they're able to get information about license plates, victim information, crime information. They send the information back and forth. They report it into the central office. So it's really their communication tool for police officers and detectives to be able to communicate and pass information back and forth.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman, do you have any more? Councilman DeCiccio, please.
I-
Oh, Councilwoman Williams, did you have something?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. Because I was talking to one of the department heads the other day who had quite an extensive list of vacancies. Had 200 applicants. They did the interviews, but when it came time for people to pass the background check, he filed, he was only able to fill about half of the vacancies he had. So I think part of the reason you see some of those vacancies is probably, they're going through the process, but I know we are very selective on who can be an employee at the city, and so many people can't pass that background.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Councilman DeCiccio?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for letting me go last. Appreciate it, because I hope I can bring some clarity to all of this too-
Of course.
... and allow the public to see some of the things that are probably not in these presentations. One, starting off with the public relations budget, every dollar that goes into the public relations budget of 3.2 million dollars is $1 more that the public is being taxed on their water bills. Water bill, public relations, I guarantee you that the public would pick the lower water rate bills. The other is, I'm kind of shocked, actually, I'm a little shocked here in talking to Councilman Waring, that we can't give a correct number on the public relations budget of what it is. I mean, and how there's no clarity on that. The other is, what is the total public relations budget for the entire city of Phoenix? Everything, fully loaded. Where are we at?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, so the public information budgets between the Central Public Information Office, the dispersed public information officers, and the enterprise funds is about 4.5 million dollars.
So 4.5 million dollars in public relations the city spends. And if you think about it, that's larger than most companies in the city of Phoenix, larger than most companies in the city of Phoenix to spend that much on PR. So let me cover one of the, before I get into some of the questions I've got here. I do want to thank staff for working on this, and Ed, you know, I know you walked into this at the end, but you're in charge, and it is your responsibility now, too. The, when you and I first talked, I really believed we were going to hit a true zero-based budget on this. Didn't hit it this time. What I'm hearing from this presentation, I'm just wanting yes or no, or where we're going on this, is that you are going to be working, you've heard it from the council members here, that you, we are going to be looking at a true zero-based budget moving forward. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, there's not exactly a yes or no answer to that because there is no one definition of zero-based budget, but our intention is to get as close to what people might consider a true zero-based budget as possible.
Well, starting from zero and then working your way up, justifying, as Councilwoman Pastore and I were talking about, justifying every expenditure all the way up, that would be a zero-based budget.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, yes. I think one thing you and I have talked- Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, yes, I think one thing you and I have talked about is, where, for example, merit and longevity play into that, and a zero-based budget does have to assume what contracts we have in place, so, we, we have to assume what our contracts say, but yes, we, we can build from that.
And I've got to give you credit on this, this is, this budget, as much as I have issues with it, and I'm going to go through why, but, is better than when it was back years ago, it just is, it's just, it's a better process, it's better structurally, not structurally internally in the numbers part of it, but the way it's being presented in a transparent way, it's just still not there yet, it's just not a true, what most people would expect to see a true zero-based budget. My understanding, Milton, you're going to be working on doing some of this stuff over the summer, and I'm really happy about that. I want to give you a name of an individual afterwards, there's an individual at Harvard, at Stanford, sorry, it wasn't Harvard, for those of you Harvard grads over here, but at Stanford, that I believe would be willing to help us out for free, give us some ideas, who does this? And, one of the things, and if it goes back quite a ways back, Councilwoman Williams, Gates and I, this is the former council member, or Vice Mayor Waring, was on the council, but we were pushing for strategic planning, it just never happened. As much as, and how painful this has been for everybody in this process, one of the things I believe that has come out, that is incredibly productive, is that we are now, and I'm hoping that it's true, and it's not just something that you're just telling the public, and then we're going to do something different, which happens here at City Hall, believe it or not, at times, not always, but sometimes it does do that, that this is going to be a true exercise in strategic planning, is that correct?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, yeah, Mr. DeHoney is going to lead, what is essentially an internal strategic planning effort?
Okay, so, and, and I'll give you a name of an individual who can help us, gave us a great presentation, Councilwoman Williams, I don't see her here right now, but, it went nowhere, everyone decided to drop it, and it gives you a good idea of where we ought to go, and let me give you at least a, a thought, because this is something that I'm really happy about, that you gave in your presentation, I just wanted to make sure we brought some clarity. When you're talking about strategic planning, it comes down to making a decision what is and what is not a strategic function, we all understand that. For example, food, delivering food to the poor, that may be a strategic function, but when you look at it vertically, we want to deliver food to the poor, but we may not need to be the ones that are delivering it. We can get them the food, we don't have to be the ones preparing it, we don't have to be the ones putting it in the car to get it to them, we don't have to do that and still accomplish the strategic function of delivering food. It, it's a look at the way we view our operations in a vertical manner, all the functions going up to that main strategic function or core mission, all those steps below that may not necessarily need to be done by City of Phoenix employees, they can be done by others as well. So as we move forward, I think that that's a great thing. Now, the other, and now let me get into some of the tougher questions here, and there's a reason that Councilwoman Williams said this has been a very painful exercise, this has been probably one of the most painful exercises, not just for the council, for management, but for the public as well. And let me lay out for you why I believe that this is problematic, is that we now have the second highest revenue, second highest revenue ever in the City of Phoenix, and we're still facing a 38 million dollar deficit, it's not logical, the public doesn't understand it, the labor groups don't understand it, because it's not logical for that to have occurred. When you have more revenue coming in, just tells you you got, your expenses are just out of whack. If you look at what occurred back in 2010, the City of Phoenix started working on fixing it, the budget of 2012 literally disseminated all that work that was done before that, and it's been progressively getting worse. This budget, I believe, makes it worse, and is along the same lines as the budget of 2010. The police, really nice that you guys put together this really pretty plan over here, what this does not tell you is the attrition level that Councilwoman Pastor, and I believe Gates, Gates had alluded to. There are 93, we talked about hiring 15 officers, but there are 93 that are going to be short, 93, is that correct? We're going, does this take into account any attrition?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, so yes, it's important to know that the, the plan that's in place to balance the special revenue funds for police and fire, there was a choice the council faced in 2010, should we lay off police officers and firefighters right now in 2010 to bring those funds immediately into balance, and the choice the council made was no, that the, that the plan would be that over a five-year period or so, that through attrition, we wouldn't fill when police officers and firefighters left, and we would take those savings to pay down the deficit that had been accumulated. So that underlays this whole thing. So that chart that you referenced there is not making up for attrition in the early part of the, of the plan, but it is resuming hiring, which was supposed to be zero until the end of 2015, in the first quarter of 2015.
And where I'm getting at on this, is that it's not fair to the public to show them one side of this, and then on the other side of it, because this council, as a whole, says they want to hire more police officers, and that creates uncertainty, because we're not letting the public know everything that is factual, that we're actually going to be short police officers. This hiring of 15 through this federal grant doesn't really allocate that much more in City of Phoenix funds, it does and it doesn't, but at the end of the day, you're still going to be short. And I think it would have been a lot more fair and a lot more transparent to show the public that they are going to be short more officers because of, of attrition. Now, the other part of it deals with compensation, because everyone's been talking about compensation, want to get this on the record, every labor group, and this could be yes, no, however you want to answer it, every labor group is going to be receiving more compensation this year than they did in previous contracts, is that correct? And these were all from your reports.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, that could be correct, I don't know right off the top of my head, including benefits and pension, yes.
Yeah, everything.
Right.
So total compensation for every unit group went up, it didn't go down, it went up, so that means that's an additional cost that was incurred by the City of Phoenix. Let's go into the property tax. We just had a presentation about, about a month or so ago, dealing with the property tax, because I believe this is going to be the next big shoe to drop, that people are going to say, "What the heck happened?", and it's really the mayor and council that created the policy that's going to literally create a problem within, in the future, and it's because of the policies adopted by the mayor and council here. But, the property tax was projected to have an increase of about 50%, 50 to 55%, we're at 40 cents, and we were looking at a potential increase of 25 cents, that's about a 50% increase in the property tax rate on the secondary, is that correct? If next year is what we're going to be looking at, either a tax increase or cut in services, is that correct?
Mayor-